When you say nation, you talk about land. Our land is Africa, that's undeniable. This land is not our land.
That what Franz Rangone's theory, psychological theory is that we're in a post-colonial psychology. And what he calls that is an autodestructural stage, which is the oppressor will oppress for so long that the oppressed no longer have to be physically oppressed, they do it to themselves on the map.
I'm black, do you hear me, man? Do you understand? I am black, I'm a nigga, do you understand me? I was born black, I live black, and I'm gonna die probably because I'm black. Because some cracker that knows I'm black better than you nigga is probably gonna put a bullet in the back of my head.
Hey man, it's like this, man, it's like, you know, it's like it's revolution time, man. There's no questions to ask, revolution is here. You know what I'm saying? We the youth, we the young, it's time for us to break loose, you know? We don't have no freedom, no rights, man, we slaves right now, everybody's still a slave. That's what they told us today, in other words, you still a slave. No matter how much money you got, you still ain't shit, so you know, it's on, just like that.
Are really, really ready and willing to pay the price that is necessary for freedom, our people will always be walking around here second-class citizens or what you call 20th-century slaves. What price are you talking about, sir? The price of freedom is death.
What's the figure?
I mean, what are you in this for? You wanna power, you wanna revenge, you know? What is it?
Okay, it's simple, Willie. I just wanna be free.
A piece, peace and power for Hulu, Imani Habarigani to the family. Welcome to another episode of the Blueprint for Black Power Study Session. I appreciate everybody that's tuning in, that will be tuning in. You know I need you to like and share this as well, as we continue to get people to be a part of these study sessions, as we look at Dr. Anderson Wilson's textbook, I'm gonna call it a textbook, Blueprint for Black Power: A Moral, Political, and Economic Comparative for the 21st Century. So again, yes, yes, peace, morning. I'm doing it, it's, you know, been a couple of weeks, glad to be back, just been really busy. Just want you to know, I'm on the ground, I'm staying busy organizing, I'm doing work, so it has been difficult for me to be consistent with these study sessions, but I'm gonna get through this book, believe that. That's one thing I'm gonna make sure that I do, no matter how long it takes. And when I get through the book, I'm gonna go back to chapter one, page one, and we're gonna do it again, and continue to evolve in our understanding of this text, so that we're able to deepen our analysis as we continue to go through it. For anyone to think that I wanna probably start doing, could do it today, and as we move forward, if anyone who is watching these lives, watching these study sessions live, if you want to come up, I'll put the link to the stream yard in the chat at some point, and as I'm going through the text, if anybody wants to come up and build, I will bring you on, but you will have to have your camera on. You know, I don't know, might have some people out there that's just trying to disrupt, so always wanna make sure that we're prepared for that. With that being said, make sure you subscribe to the channel if you haven't subscribed as of yet, and before I get into, I'm still in chapter two, Basis of Power, before I get into the chapter, I want to play a video, just a quick, maybe a few minutes of Comrade Kwame Ture, the great Pan-Africanist leader, whose born day is tomorrow, so tomorrow would be his born day, or his birthday, June 29th, so I wanna make sure that I commemorate someone who's had such a tremendous influence on me. Remember many moons ago, when I read Ready for Revolution, that had a huge impact on me. Actually, it had more influence on me, I think, than Malcolm X's autobiography, and in comparison, I think that Ready for Revolution is, and I'm not comparing the leaders, I'm just talking about the book, I think it's a better reading or book, and I'm a Malcolmite, I consider myself a Malcolmite, but that Ready for Revolution, I thought, was very powerful, just the reason I like the autobiography is because though he's telling his story, he's also given us history of the movement within the book. So he's talking about a whole lot of other sort of unsung leaders in the civil rights movement, people that we don't hear about, the black women and black men who were on the ground, struggling to make change happen. So there's usually the leadership of the movement that we hear about, such as the Dr. Kings, the Kwame Ture's, or Stokely Carmichael at the time, the John Lewis's, the James Formans, and so forth, but there was the Ella Bakers and Fannie Lou Hamer's, but there were a lot of folk that we don't know about who was part of these organizations that were struggling to make, to make change happen. So I was, I really appreciated that history and learning about all of those people. So, you know, for anyone who hasn't read the text Ready for Revolution, autobiography Kwame Ture, check that out, and so again, I just wanna at least start off just by playing a few minutes of Kwame Ture speaking, and then we'll get into the text, and then I'll probably end it off with some Kwame Ture as well. So again, appreciate everybody for joining, I'm gonna share my screen. And this is from, this is a CBS special, Black Power: White Backlash, and so maybe we look at maybe about three, four minutes of Kwame Ture going there.
A reminder, he said, of his African heritage.
I think that there's a realization in this country that black power is not just a mere slogan, nationally or internationally. It is real that black people can come together and start determining for their lives how they're gonna live, and controlling their economic and political lives.
Why talk about dynamite sticks if Molotov cocktails won't work? When you talk of black power, building a movement that will smash everything that Western civilization has created, when you say that black power should bring the country to its knees anytime it messes with the black man, and these are quotes from Stokely Carmichael, the picture has got to be, in the mind of white man and black man, one of a man who threatens violence.
On the contrary, if you say that you have to bring the country to its knees if it messes with a black man, you're saying that the only protection for black people is that they unite, so that when one black man is touched, because he's black, there's some protection for him. Now, it's obvious that that protection does not exist in this country, it does not now exist, and the only people who can have that protection are black people, and black people know that, now white people may not know that. So it means that you have to build a movement so strong in this country, that if one black man is touched, every black man will rise up and let this country know they're not gonna tolerate it.
If one man, one black man is touched?
That's right, because he's black. I mean, if a black man is walking down the streets of Mississippi, down the highway with a Bible in his hand, he is shot because he is black.
That's one incident.
I can name you a lot of others, and you know that yourself.
In the northern ghettos.
If one black man in California is driving his pregnant wife to the hospital, and he is shot by a white racist policeman, I can name you more incidents.
Then you're saying, fight violence with violence.
I am saying that we must build a movement of black people that will protect ourselves so that we are willing to stop that by any means necessary. Now, I'm not concerned about the question of violence, it seems to me that that will depend upon how in fact white people respond. If white people in fact are willing not to bother with black people because they are black, then there's gonna be no question of violence.
When you read stories about difficulties, riots in Omaha, or Cleveland, or Brooklyn, or Chicago, or wherever.
I call them rebellions.
They're rebellions, and you, you see nothing wrong with them?
I think that it is people who are rebelling against a system that has locked them inside tight of ghettos, that exploits and oppresses them, and they have no means of redress to break that system down. We intend to build within black people the realization that that problem is not theirs, that's created by white society, it's purposely created by white society, and then they throw it back on us and blame us. That's the first thing we have to create in black people. Then secondly, we have to move to a position where we can control the housing in our neighborhoods so that we're not exploited, so that we're not charged high rents to share apartments with rats, and so that the owners of those apartments don't live in the suburbs grabbing the profits from us, that we are able to grab it, and that the money will be able to stay in our community so we can develop it. It is no different from a colony in Africa who is supposedly free, but her resources are controlled by the mother country. They have to move to a position to control the resources, and having done that, their problems are already solved.
And the means that you will use to achieve all of this?
Any means necessary.
Well, I know, but now, spell that out, what does that mean?
It means that we will develop tactics as we go along, and whatever those tactics are, we will use them.
Tactics, that means you've gotta buy the buildings, you've gotta start the businesses, you've gotta train the people. How are you gonna do that by yourselves? How are you gonna do it without the help of the white community?
Well, the first help we'd need of the white community is just to turn over those buildings to us.
Turn them over?
That's correct, turn them over.
You think that's likely, Mr. Carmichael?
Well, you asked me what help we wanted white people to give, or they could buy it for us.
You mean Washington would buy it from, let's say, the slumlord and turn it over to you?
That's correct.
You believe really that that is the salvation of the black man?
I think that this country is run by property ownership, and that black people are not only property less, they are viewed as property. And we have to move to a position of property ownership in this country, so that we can bargain from a position of strength with racists rather than a position of weakness.
You're one black man who went to a good, essentially, white high school in the city of New York, you obviously had had a good education.
That's.
A good many of the people who work with you here in SNC can say the same thing.
And we're saying that...
And you're a black man who came from a New York ghetto.
And we're saying that there's a system that allows for one or two black people to get out, and that that's the rationale for keeping other black people down.
And it has nothing to do with the unwillingness or inability of the negro to help himself and to work hard?
That's the rationale, that the reason why black people aren't this is because they're lazy, unambitious, stupid, have rhythm, and they eat watermelon.
You call on the black man to refuse to respond to his draft call.
All right, all right, I'm gonna stop it there. I love how Kwame Ture like flips that rationale around on Mike Wallace, just so he can hear how racist he sounds by making that statement, "You're one black man that made it out the ghetto." He's implying that, oh, you know, these other people, other black people don't want to rise out of their conditions of poverty and struggle within the internal colony. That's what he's implying in that statement. And so Kwame Ture is getting him to think about what you just said, what, you just think we're just lazy and we just love being in poverty, we love being oppressed and colonized, that's what you're saying? You see, he moved on from, moved on to the next question, he didn't even wanna engage that. So yeah, it's Kwame Ture again, tomorrow's his born day, just wanted to celebrate him. I probably won't be doing one of these study sessions tomorrow, but I may be on some platform speaking about Kwame Ture, just going, going more in-depth with his bio and the work that he has done. So with that being said, though, let's get into the study session, I don't have a lot of time, but I want us to, to go back to where we left off, and I'm gonna share my screen so many of you can, who's viewing now, will be viewing, will be able to read along with me. Here we go. All right, so this is where I left off, that last organizations and institutions as power sources, if you didn't view the last study session, just wanna encourage you to go back, I go over the chart that he has in here, chart 2.1, where he looks at 300 years of racial quotas in order for white people to capture, capture the economy. And when I say capture the economy, white people had already captured the economy, but they were able to establish themselves in new industries where black people weren't able to compete with them on an equal playing field, and so now we're in a position where we have these industries and where we have individuals who are able to gain access to these industries and make money, but as individuals, but as a group, we weren't able to compete and take advantage. So now we're left struggling for crumbs and competing with each other to be able to be a part of these industries and join some of these institutions. And the objective isn't to compete or be a part of these institutions, so I just wanna be clear on that as well, but I'm just, it's important to paint the picture to see how the colony operated, how racism operated, to put us at such a disadvantage, even within the colony. So with that being said, there's other groups of people who are exploited and oppressed within the colony, but because of their relationship, or their relation to whiteness and white people, they were able to take advantage of the vulnerable African population within the colony. So I think that's very important to detail. So I'm gonna go here, organizations and institutions as power sources, as we continue to deepen this, and this is a chapter two discussing basis of power, so he says, "Power, particularly, its effective exercise to achieve certain ends, does not flow solely from the ownership and control of property as thing and property as right." Okay. Effective working power, the essence of social power, requires the coordinated organization of power resources. It is not the mere possession of power resources and of the power which flows from their possession, which enables some groups to dominate others, but it is more so the organization of power on the part of the dominant group, in contrast to the relative disorganization of the subordinate group, which may possess potentially more powerful human and/or material resources than a dominant group, which ensures their control over the subordinate group. All right, we're gonna circle back to this. So he says, "We can concur with Beetham when he asserts that the relative difference of power between people are largely the result of social arrangements, and the relations of power between them are typically the product of collective organization." To paraphrase Beetham, "The manner in which a group's internal social relations, that is power relations, are organized has obvious consequences for the power of the group and of the society as a whole. For Beetham further contends, it is rare for subordinate groups to lack any means of power of their own, even if it takes the defensive form of a power of limitation or veto, and face of the power of initiative exercised by the dominant. The subordinate are often more numerous, and their contribution within the social division of labor and within the social division of consumption makes them..." "Makes them indispensable as a group to the dominant." He goes on to argue that essentially, one of the purposes of the organization of power on the part of the dominant is to ensure the relative disorganization among the subordinate. Thus, the subordinate, through effective social organization, may enable themselves to change the nature and outcomes of the power relations between the dominant and themselves, perhaps to the extent of revolutionizing those relations." He's telling us what we need to do, in essence. Let me, I'm going to, it's two paragraphs in this section, more paragraphs, I'm just gonna finish this off, he says, "Even if we were to argue that the individual and that individual behavior are the foundation of social systems and the powers they manifest, we still must give due respect to power born of organization. The power man represents in the world, whether as individual or group, is a power operationally founded on physical, mental, and social organization, and on the organized behavior which flows therefrom. Hence, human social organization, not mere individual self-interested behavior, is central to the generation and application of power. The upcoming discussion of ethnically-based economic development amply supports the assertion made by Adolph Berle that, quote-unquote, 'No collective category, no class, no group of any kind in and of itself wills power or can use it.' Another fact that must be present, that of organization,' end quote. Berle goes on to correctly contend that, quote, 'Power is invariably organized and transmitted through institutions,' end quote. Social organization refers to the interactive uniting of a number of persons into a group who, through the structured use of their aggregate resources, act to achieve the group's purposes and goals. As alluded by Wong in 1988, quote, "'The more people who contribute their holdings or personal, social, and/or material resources to a common pool, the greater the aggregate resources to pursue a group's goals and enhance its power are likely to be,'' end quote. As Galbraith in '83 asserts, 'Through organization of group and the individual who constituted or speak and act according to its mandates, may thereby gain access to condign punitive, compensatory, and especially to condition behavior and mind-control power. Organized groups as collective actors controlling resources provide themselves with the capacity to exercise power over non-members, the general public, particularly clientele, the local community, and political leaders,'' end quote." All right, all right, all right, so much was dropped in this section right here, essentially, essentially even like as he ended off, I think this is the powerful point to be made, is that organized groups are able to exercise power over people who are not organized. Organized groups are able to exercise power over individuals, over whole nations of people, ethnic groups, if they are not organized. If you're disorganized, then you leave yourself vulnerable to oppression and exploitation. And so I'm gonna scroll back to the beginning of this section, because it's something very important that I wanna highlight. So he's talking about power, right? How we can have possessed power, we can have the potential for power, talking about resources. You can have all the property, you can have the land, and still not be, and still be oppressed or under the control and power of another group of people who may not have any resources or far less resources than you, and why is that the case? And what are examples of that, right? For one, the example is that you have minority, you have a minority people who's able to exercise power over masses, over a larger population of people, and how is that the case, right? Because they're more organized, right? Because if you collectively came together, there's no minority of people that can, you know, the strength is in the numbers. An individual is not gonna be able to take on 100 organized people, or even 50, or five organized people, right? If those people are properly organized. Now, an example, I'm gonna reread what he says here first, he says, what part I'm gonna start at? All right, let me just start here, where he says effective working power, so effective working power, the essence of social power, requires the coordinated organization of power resources. It is not the mere possession of power resources and other power which flows from their possession, which enables some groups to dominate others, but it's more so the organization of power on the part of the dominant group, in contrast to the relative disorganization of the subordinate group. All right, so here, let's just think about Africa. Think about Africa, Africa has all the resources that need, African people on the continent probably don't have to deal with another group of people, they can probably build a wall around Africa and be, be good, because they have all of the resources that they need there. The land underneath their feet, for one, you know, they are on top of the land that has all of these resources, but, but they are still being politically and economically dominated by groups, particularly the Europeans, and even the Chinese are able to come into Africa, right, and be able to take advantage of African work, African working class, as a result of the disorganization of African people. Not even just the physical, but the mental, you know, as he talks about here, even the mental disorganization of a people. And so part of the reason that they're able to do this, right, the disorganization, if you go here, where he says, "We concur with Beetham when he asserts that the relative differences of power between people are largely the result of social arrangements." What social arrangement are we talking about? In this sense, I mean, there's different social arrangements you can have within a society, but I think the most important one, in my opinion, is the colonial relation, that's social arrangement, there's a colonial relationship between African people and Europeans, that's a given, and there's other groups of people who are able to take advantage of this relationship that we have with Europeans. So you can have, if you look at, let's look at in America, or anywhere where African people are, where there's other people who are not necessarily European, Chinese people, Indian people, the Jewish community can come into the black community because of this vulnerability, and are able to exploit the black community as well. Dr. Wilson, he talks about this as well, even in some of his speeches, I was actually just listening to Dr. Wilson, and he talked about the disorganization and the lack of trust that black people have in our communities, and the reason why we have this too is because it is, it is to the benefit of other communities that we are disorganized, they economically benefit from our disorganization, and that's why they have an interest in keeping us disorganized. And so the reason why you can be in a predominantly African community and have other businesses come in there, because for one, there's this lack of confidence, right, that we have in each other and collective organization, and I'm saying all African people, but you get what I'm saying, this even though I'm generalizing, but they're able to come into the community, you have stores, businesses within the community that are not in control, you have people from other communities educating our children, you know, so it's not even just economically being exploited, but there's people who can take advantage of whatever jobs are available in the community and be able to benefit from those institutions. So all of this goes back to the social arrangement, though, the colonial relationship that we have. So going, I'm just gonna scroll to the part where he talks about what we need to do, because in essence, it's like what, how others benefit from what we are doing, is that is revealing to us what we need to be doing. If we study, if we examine, if we say, hey, you know, people are benefiting from our disorganization, so the answer is organization, you know? If people are benefiting from our individualism or our liberalism, then the answer is collectivism, right? The answer is creating communalism, creating social arrangements where we are working collectively for the advancement of our people. So he goes right here, he says, he goes on to argue that essentially, one of the purposes of the organization of power on that part of the dominant is to ensure the relative disorganization among the subordinate. Thus, the subordinate, the colonized, the oppressed, the exploited, through a... through effective social organization may enable themselves to change the nature and outcomes of the power relations between the dominant and themselves. Perhaps to the extent of revolutionizing those relations. So I'm going to stop there and just, just add this. I was just in a conference, at a conference. Uh, big up to community movement builders. I want to big them up. Who, uh, was able to organize a powerful, powerful conference in Atlanta, Georgia. And, um, you know, peace, peace. My brother, uh, Christian, I don't know if he's still in the building. Um, shout out to that brother who's doing so much great work, um, in the community, uh, as a Pan-Africanist, um, you know, on the continent and in the diaspora. Um, big up, big up to you. Uh, can't wait to continue to do some more, uh, things with you. Um, I was just down in, in Georgia and it was a Pan-Africanist conference down there. And there was, uh, uh, several organizations that was involved in that conference. Um, and it was, it was a success. It was powerful. Um, and you can check out the replays for that. It was, it was, um, it was, uh, taped, uh, and it's on Black Power Media. And subscribe to Black Power Media if you haven't already. Uh, but you can see the conference on Black Power Media was for, um, a three-day conference. Uh, but just to see so many, uh, people in one room organizing and connecting with each other uh, in itself is powerful. And the, and the success of that conference was a result of, of organizations coming together and collectively wanting to do that. And it's going to have a powerful impact. Um, uh, and, and I don't know if everybody who was a part of that seen it, but for the people who were going to view that conference, who was there or who is going to view that conference in the future, to see several organizations come together to be able to put that on and put out an analysis is going to inspire so many people, right? Um, but the, the other point I want to make is if, if, if all of these organizations continue to work together collectively to advance the interests of African people, you will see significant changes. You will see tremendous changes happen immediately, immediately. Just imagine all of the organizations who are struggling or fighting for the liberation of African people just say, hey, you know, let's come together and for this particular objective, no matter how small or big, how easy it would be to accomplish that. And sometimes what keeps us from, from, um, a lot of times was, what keeps us from achieving, uh, our, 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 uh, individual objectives and our organizational objectives is because we're too busy competing with each other when, you know, we have to, um, be able to overcome ideological and philosophical differences. Uh, so with that being said though, you know, I want, I got some schoolwork to do. So I'm going, uh, in this, in this, in a few. But I want to appreciate everybody for coming on. Like I said, I want to, um, end this with Kwame Ture. Uh, this clip I'm going to play is not the best quality, but I'm telling you, the message is so powerful because he, he's going to make a powerful point in regards to what the, uh, uh, the oppressor, what their objective is when it comes to the oppressed. In regards to the, the type of psychology they try to, um, uh, shape, uh, among the oppressed. It's important, important. Again, tomorrow's Kwame Ture's, um, uh, birthday, uh, born day. Um, so make sure you uplift his name so that, um, more and more people uh, know who Kwame Ture is and what he was fighting for. The ultimate Pan-Africanist, I would say. Uh, so let me share my screen. Appreciate everybody joining. Um, I'll go right to this. This is Kwame Ture on identity.
For all people, but especially for an oppressed people. Indeed, the first job of the oppressor is to wipe out the culture of the oppressed and have the oppressed believe that they have the same culture as the oppressor. His job is to have you think that you have the same history as the oppressor. Once he thinks that you have the same history, once you think you have the same culture, you will think that the enemies of your oppressor happens to be your enemies. Once you know your history, once you know your culture, you will know that the enemies of your enemy must be aided to bring down your enemy. This has to do a lot with the question of identity. Now, we must study in our analysis, we do not make the errors that others do. Anytime you make an analysis of an oppressed people in any aspect of their life and you leave out the enemy, you will never come to a correct analysis. On the contrary, you will blame the oppressed for all of their problems. And for which, uh, you from the very beginning, we've never taken the line of others that the biggest problem that we have is we ourselves. No, our biggest problem is our enemy, capitalism, and it must be destroyed. We say, "Any analysis you make of an oppressed people must include the oppressor. Otherwise, you will come up with an incorrect analysis blaming the oppressed for their position of oppression." Even if one were to talk about the drugs in our community, if you just talk about drugs and not talk about the enemy, you make no analysis at all. Or you may sound serious saying about, or you know, the trouble with our kids is that all they're doing is fighting for drugs and shooting each other and shooting each other for drugs, and I wish they would stop. If you haven't brought in the question of who brings the drugs in, why the drugs are brought in, for what purpose they are brought in, you will never understand the problem at all. Thus, we make it clear to each and everyone, when we speak of the conditions of the African masses, we begin from the very beginning with the enemy of the African masses or unjust system that seeks to exploit us, capitalism, and especially the racist capitalist system in the United States of America. It is this system which comes to confuse us as to the question of identity. Go into any Italian community, ask all of them what they are. Each and every one of them will tell you without responding, Italian. Go to any Polish community inside this country, ask from the little youngest to the oldest one what they are without blinking an eye. They will tell you, Polish, each and every last one of them. Go to the Palestinian community here, which is still not free. You'll find Palestinians born in America. Ask any of them quickly, what are you, without blinking an eye? They will tell you, Palestine is not free and I'm fighting to make it free, even in America. Go to Africans who've been in America longer than all of them. Go to Africans who came here under conditions none of them came here under. All of them volunteered to came here, went to get visas to get here. Look at the Africans who didn't ask to come here, who were butchered against their will, who should hate America and should be the last to paint their Americans. Ask them, what are you? I'm American and proud of it, and if you say something against it, I'll kill you. They say the job of the enemy is to make you identify totally with the enemy. Even if we call ourselves Americans, they don't treat us like Americans. They don't treat us like Americans. We have built this country and they shoot us down in the street like dogs and somebody's still holding on to them. But we Americans, there's nothing in America for us except exploitation.
All right, all right, all right. I mean, that's a mic drop right there. The, the, the job of the enemy, the job of the oppressor is to make you think that, to identify yourself with the oppressor. It's a conversation that I have. I talked to my students about this as well and many people, um, in regards to just like this, um, nationalist identity where, you know, people can identify the same national identity as American. But there's somebody who considers themselves a billionaire, who's an American, somebody that only has a dollar in their pocket and they're calling themselves an American. What do you two have in common, right? You have more in common as African working class in America with the African working class all across the world uh, than you do with the bourgeoisie, uh, within the United States of America or anywhere. And so we got to think about this class interest, um, and the interest to rid ourselves of this, um, exploitative system. With that being said though, I appreciate everybody. We're going to continue to have this build. Look out for the next study session. I will be, uh, promoting that soon as I lock down a date. Um, this, this Saturday, we probably are not going to have, uh, the Saturday podcast. Uh, the International African Arts Festival in Brooklyn, New York is going on. So if you haven't been, if you're in the area, or if you have been, uh, make sure you're there this week. And I'll probably be out there all four days. It's a four-day event. Um, so until next time though, you know, peace, power, uh, Uhuru. And, you know, all power to the people.